To call this village board meeting to order it is number 3,097, June 8, 2015. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Abernathy, Kim, here. Norton?
Here.
Ricas?
Here.
Russell?
Here.
Very good. Would everyone that can, please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let's get started with the approval of the minutes. I need a motion to approve the Board of Trustees' regular meeting minutes from May 11, 2015. So moved?
Second.
All right. Motion by Norton, second by Kim. Discussion? Okay. Clerk, please call the roll.
Norton?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Ricas?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Very good. Motion carries. That takes us to the part of the evening where we have public commentary. Is anyone present that wishes to address the village board at this time from the podium? We have one. Anyone else? Okay. Sir, go ahead and come on up and give us your name and your address as well if you wish.
My name is Rex Miller. My address is 431 North Ridgemore Avenue. My concern-
We gotta get your mic on. Just a second. There we go.
My name is Rex Miller. My address is 431 North Ridgemore Avenue. And I wish to address the way in which the village has been, and I will use the word advisedly butchering the trees rather than pruning them, the timing of the pruning, and the fact that they were arbitrarily trimming ash trees, conifers, and maples, all of which, based on any research I can find, is entirely the wrong time for them to be done. And I am representing not just myself, but five other property holders on the street. I have affidavits of their approval to represent them. I have some images I would like to represent of how Sawville's crew were using a saw to slash at branches rather than cutting, many times missing their objective branch and slashing into the bark of the tree. I have current images today that I took this morning of wounds that are healing badly, still bleeding because the trees were not the right kind to be cut in May. I also have documentation I got off the web from the Chicago Botanical Garden, the Illinois University Extension, and the city of Minneapolis that's attempting to save two and a half million ash trees, all of say ash trees should not be pruned at this time of the year. I would like to know why the village has undertaken such an activity at an inappropriate time of the year for the tree talk. Why has the village ignored everybody else's wisdom on when trees should be pruned? And the secondary issue is, why is Ron Sawville out there with people who are not our workers hacking at the trees, probably going to cause a lot of emeralds and law to attack the trees because of the time of the impact? Let's give you the-
Do you want to respond? Okay.
I think you can give those to the village clerk.
Yeah. Thank you.
Perhaps what you can do, unfortunately, our public works director is not here this evening, who is responsible for running that program. Perhaps if you can maybe leave your name and number, I can give you my business card, and we can connect you with our public works director, and you can have a conversation with him about that.
Sure. I left my wallet in the truck, so I don't have it with me.
I can give you one of mine.
If you give me a car, I can send them. One of the other issues I have-
This is the name of the public works director.
Thank you. I've got a microphone, so if I could- ... workers from further damaging a tree that I planted in the boulevard, not the village. In fact, the village hasn't touched the trees on North Ridgemore Avenue, the 400th, for probably 30 years. So why did they just suddenly came through and did it? I stopped the young man who was slashing at the tree with a saw, and his foreman was very upset. He called Adam from the Public Works group. Adam came over and told me that, well, it doesn't matter if the trees cry, but I'm not quite that naive to think the trees cry. I do know that if you prune them at the wrong time of the year, when the sap is running, you've just damaged the tree. He also told me you were pruning to 16 feet. You have in that package images where they were pruning to an excess of 30 feet. Those are issues that need to be addressed. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. All right, we'll close the floor, move on in our agenda. Presentations and awards, there are none this evening. That takes us to public hearings. And we do have a public hearing regarding a request for the Fifth Amendment to the Munderline Crossings Revised Annexation Agreement. So let me bring that up. And so we need to, I need to get a motion and a vote to recess into the public hearing.
So moved?
Motion by Kim. Second. Second by Norton. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Do you want to do the police sergeant first, since he has his family here, they can-
Well, we'd have to take a vote to switch it on the agenda. We can do that.
No, you could do that. You could move the other one out.
Just move it up?
Sure.
Okay. It's a good idea. Trustee Simple. What we're going to do is go to the first item on the mayor's agenda in the regular board meeting, so we'll put the motion, the second, on hold and come back to it. Very good. And we're going to instead get to the introduction of a newly promoted sergeant in our police force, Brian Kisselberg. And I'll turn this over to Chief Gunther at this time.
As we have been doing for some time now, when we have a new promotion, we like to bring them to the board, introduce them to you, give you an opportunity to meet them face to face, and also give them the chance to be recognized for their hard work and accomplishments. So Sergeant Kisselberg, Brian, come on up here. Sergeant Kisselberg's been with the police department since 1999. He is a, lives in Munderline, and went to Carmel High School, went to St. Norbert College and graduated in 1999 when he was hired by the police department. His career at the police department, hey, he's done a number of things, including he is currently a state-certified accident reconstructionist, one of a few, and recently served three years as the Munderline High School Resource Officer out of Munderline High School. He takes over as sergeant just a couple of weeks ago due to a retirement within the department. And so I'd like to introduce Officer Brian Kisselberg, or Sergeant Kisselberg, and his wife Jenny, along with their two kids are here today. Brian, go ahead up, and the mayor will give you your badge, and you'll be sworn in. Go right up here.
And do the swearing.
Can you raise your right hand and repeat after me? I, Brian Kisselberg, do solemnly swear-
I, Brian Kisselberg, do solemnly swear-
-that I will support the Constitution of the United States-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States-
-and the Constitution of the State of Illinois-
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
-and that I will faithfully discharge the duties-
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
-of the Office of Police Sergeant-
Of the Office of Police Sergeant.
-according to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. May I please do the honors? There you go.
And if you could just-
All right. Congratulations again.
You could sign right there.
To sign his name and then-
Got to get all the official-
Go down the row.
Yes. Great, thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you. Congratulations, Sergeant.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. All right. Congratulations to Sergeant Brian Kisselberg. All right, so we are going to the public hearing now. We have a motion and a second to recess into that public hearing. Do I have any discussion on that? All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Kim?
Yes.
Norton?
Yes.
Ricas?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
All right, now I need a, to call this to order, the public hearing, I need a motion to call it to convene. There we go. Motion to convene the public hearing. So moved. Second. Motion by Ricas, second by Norton. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Ricas?
Yes.
Norton?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
All right, now I need a, to call this to order, the public hearing, I need a motion to call it to convene. There we go. Motion to convene the public hearing. So moved. Second. Motion by Ricas, second by Norton. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Ricas?
Yes.
Norton?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Motion carries. We are now in session. Clerk, would you please take attendance?
Abernathy, Kim?
Here.
Norton?
Here.
Ricas?
Yes.
Russell?
Here.
Simple?
Here.
Very good. All right, I'm going to read the rules of procedure here. There are six items, and then we'll get to the opening remarks. Rules of procedure, number one, the purpose of the public hearing tonight is to solicit comments from the public on the prepared Fifth Amendment to the Revised Annexation Agreement, Munderline Crossings. Number two, order of the proceedings has been made available to the audience. Number three, members of the audience that wish to ask questions or make statements regarding the annexation agreement may do so during the time period noted on the order of proceedings sheet. Number four, all questions from the audience should be directed to the mayor. If the mayor is unable to answer the question, the mayor will direct the question to the staff, village attorney, or the petitioner. Number five, please don't repeat questions that have already been asked. Number six, audience members wishing to ask a question or make a statement should wait to be recognized by the mayor. So we have a few portions here. First, we'll hear from Kelly Cahill, I believe, correct? Or the petitioner.
Petitioner.
And then we will hear from Victor Barrera, our community development director, and then we will have members of the public ask questions or make statements. Then we'll have statements or questions from the village board, and then we'll have the close. Okay? So at this point, we'll have the opening remarks by Kelly Cahill. No?
No.
Mr. Tom Bernie.
Tom Bernie, okay, I'm sorry. Just looking at my notes here. Sorry there.
I'm Tom Bernie, representing the petitioner of Munderline Ventures, seeking your- At this point, it's a public hearing on the Fifth Amendment that's before you. It's been available for review and comment. It was subject to a legal notice that appeared in the newspaper well more than 15 days before this public hearing was scheduled. We represent Munderline Ventures. What we're seeking to do is to rezone the ground. We own about 40 acres of what you all look at as part of the Munderline Crossing development, the large shopping center development. This has been a piece of ground that's been zoned to office research for 12 years with absolutely no interest in it. We feel that it's appropriate for multiple families. We received the unanimous approval of the plan commission at our hearing when it was scheduled. And this amendment really works four things. One, it provides that later in the meeting you would adopt an ordinance rezoning the ground for all our five. It affects absolutely no change in Unit 1. However, the village attorney suggested, and it's a really good idea, that the commercial development in this piece no longer be joined at the hip, so to speak, that if there is a change that wants to be affected on the Munderline Crossings parcel, the commercial development, they shouldn't need to get the approval of the owner of this piece of ground and vice versa. So that's what's been incorporated into the agreement. And finally, there isn't going to be any land development on this until the developer comes back and obtains approval of a development agreement, a site plan, subdivision approval from the village. So what this is offering is the ability to make this property available to the market for our five, multiple-family residential development, which we think is a wise idea. The market's really rejected office research here. So that's what the amendment does. Have you answered any questions or field anything from the audience?
I just want to make a statement because we're now streaming live, online, and we have folks live in the audience, just to clarify to the folks where this property is, just so we all know what we're talking about. So I'll just go ahead and volunteer that. If you're at Winchester in 83, and you go south, all right, before you get to the Ivanhoe Baseball Field, there's about 40 acres there, and 20 of that is buildable.
Correct.
Okay? And that's the piece that we're talking about, right there, on the west side of 83, just north, just on the other side of the Long Meadow Estates development, so.
Right. The request is for the entire 40 acres.
Correct.
Correct me, or only 20 of it is-
All right, just to give context here, so, okay. That's all I had. Any, okay? So now-
Whatever's next.
What was next? Okay, well, that was the opening remarks. We come to the summary of proposed amendment of the Revised Annexation Agreement. Mr. Barrera?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Bernie did an excellent job in summarizing the proposed Fifth Amendment. We've been working with Mr. Bernie and his clients and the property owners for quite some time. We've also been working with our village attorney, Charlie Moreno, to review it. The draft that you have before you has been reviewed by our attorney, is okay by our attorney. I know that Mr. Byram was instrumental in coordinating some of the comments and concerns that were had by the adjacent commercial developer, and making sure that there were separate agreements, that they weren't tied at the hip. And so I do appreciate Bernie's efforts with that. That's really about it.
Okay. Any questions from the public? Any questions or statements? All right? No? Very good. Let's go to the board. Any questions or statements for members of the village board?
No.
No? This is all going to come up later in the village board meeting, under a series of motions. And so at this point, we can close the public hearing, but I'll need a motion to close this public hearing at this point. So moved. Second. Motion by Ricas, second by Norton. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Ricas?
Yes.
Norton?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Is that everybody?
Oh. Russell?
Yes.
Motion carries.
It's okay.
And now we come back to the village board meeting. We need a motion to reconvene. Go ahead. I'm sorry. Yep, yep.
I'll make that.
Seconded. Just. Oh.
Okay, motion by Kim.
Second by Norton. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Kim?
Yes.
Norton?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Ricas?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Very good. Motion carries. Village board meeting has been reconvened. That takes us to my report. Wanted to welcome Ben Yoder, sitting over there. He is our acting deputy chief of the fire department. Welcome, sir. Great to have you. I wanted to give just some words of appreciation to all the volunteers for the Craft Beer Festival that we had here on Saturday. I had a great time there. I'm looking around, trying to find other people that maybe got a little bit too much sun like I did, and went home and scared myself looking in the mirror at the end of that. It was a great time. Wanted to just appreciate all the volunteers. There were so many folks that volunteered their time so freely. And once again, kudos to Mr. Flynn, Mr. Munderline. He's our liaison with the Munderline Community Connection, MCC, in helping make all that happen, along with a whole bunch of other folks. Trustee Russ was out there with the volunteer shirt on, and it was just a great time. It was our inaugural event out here on the plaza. It went very, very well. So thank you very much to everyone that helped make that happen. All right, so we did that. Let's go to a commission appointment. I need a motion to approve my commission appointment of Mr. Brian Schneckloth to the Fire Pension Board. I'll make the motion. Second. Motion by Simple, second by Ricas. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Simple?
Yes.
Ricas?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Norton?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
All right, very good. Mr. Schneckloth, can you come on up and get sworn in?
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Brian Schneckloth, do solemnly swear-
I, Brian Schneckloth, do solemnly swear-
-that I will support the Constitution of the United States-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States-
-and the Constitution of the State of Illinois-
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
-and that I will faithfully discharge the duties-
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
-of the Office of Fire Pension Board Member-
Of the Office of the Fire Pension Board Member.
-according to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
All right. Thank you very much. Go ahead and sign away and-
Of course.
Thanks for stepping up and volunteering for this. It's great. Go ahead and-
Congratulations. Congratulations. It's a long walk.
All right, many thanks to Mr. Schneckloth for volunteering to be on the Fire Pension Board. Looking forward to his term and years of service there. Okay, taking us to item C, electrical service provider. I need a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the village administrator to enter into a contract for the purchase of electricity from the lowest-cost electricity provider for the purpose of street lighting through the Northern Illinois Municipal Electric Collaborative Bid Process.
So moved.
Motion by Kim.
Second.
Second by Norton. Discussion? Okay, clerk, please call the roll.
Kim?
Yes.
Norton?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Ricas?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, real estate appraisals. We have some property that we need to have appraised at this time. There are two motions. First, I need a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the village administrator to sign the contract with, let's see, let me get this right, RJ Schmidt and Associates, Inc.
So moved.
Motion by Kim.
Second.
Second by Norton. Discussion? Yes. Trustee Simple.
Quick question. Where are the three parcels? I believe at least one of them is in Locklomen, if I'm not mistaken.
All three. All three are in Locklomen.
And second question, you know, assuming somebody wants to buy, or three individuals or builders want to buy these lots, have we determined what we're going to do with the proceeds? Are we just going to throw it into the general funds? Or have we earmarked the funds towards any specific projects, like road improvement or downtown revitalization? You know, anything special for this money?
No, we just have it going into general revenues of the village.
So that could be discussed at some point?
Yes.
Terrific. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Clerk, please call the roll.
Kim?
Yes.
Norton?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Ricas?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, a motion to authorize purchase order and payment to RJ Schmidt and Associates in the amount of $12,050. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Norton, second by Kim. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Norton?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Ricas?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Last, I wanted to just kind of prepare the trustees. I want to bring up on the agenda next week, or excuse me, the next meeting, and just ask that you would start doing a little study here. I've had, I've talked to a few trustees interested in discussing the notion of phosphorus in our fertilizer and what it does, and things we can do, and staff has done about half the work in terms of researching that. And assuming we have the, go ahead, I think we, you know, what I'll do is ask staff to complete that research. We'll talk about it, whether we do nothing, whether we do a resolution imploring the state folks to get serious about this, or whether we actually have an ordinance in town to do something about it. That'll all be discussed, so you have a couple of weeks to now do your research, start reading up on it a little bit. And I just wanted to give you a heads up there. All right? Trustee reports. Public Works Committee, trustee Russell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have a number of items. First has to do with the Butterfield Road sanitary sewer expansion. I have a motion to recommend staff work to coordinate one consolidated sanitary sewer expansion project, seeking reimbursement from the affected property owners.
Second to motion. All right. Motion by Russell, second by Simple. Discussion?
I just wanted to add a comment to that. It's not really a discussion point. In the absence of Mr. Beauchamp, we discussed this item. We had been reporting to the board that we thought that the project wasn't going to go forward because there was a lack of interest on the property owner's part on Butterfield Road. In the 11th hour, we received a letter from three of the property owners, which are roughly, I think, and there's a map inside the papers that we provided to the board, that indicated that they would be interested in the extension of the sanitary sewer. They would also be interested in doing it as a special service area and not a recapture because of the benefits that they would have on their property taxes. They could take right off their property taxes. So I think this is put on the board's agenda to just simply reaffirm that, to direct staff to move forward to extend this project as far north from its current location, as far north as possible, to service those properties that are interested. I think later in the agenda, there's a request for development at the south end of this service area. So there's a lot to coordinate right now. And we just wanted to bring the board up to speed on where we're at. And so we want to explore not only finishing the final engineering on it, which we're probably 70% complete, but then what is the scope of the project, the limits of it? And what is the method, the ideas that the village would pay for this? And then be reimbursed as property owners connect to the system. So what, what option we use? We have not really come in on a landing yet, but we'll bring that back to the board for further discussion.
Has the development on the south end indicated anything that they would go along with it also?
Yes, I know that they need sewer. So there are really not much choice. But they will be extending the sewer. And we haven't, I don't think we finalized those discussions either. Who's doing what, when, and how?
So out of looking at the map, it appears as if there's 10 parcels, and there would be four who have indicated that they would go along with it?
Correct.
All right. Anyone else? Okay. Clerk, please call the roll. Oh, yeah, go ahead. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Russell?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Norton?
Yes.
Rikus?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next motion has to do is the Community Development Block Grant Application. Make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the execution and submittal of a Community Development Block Grant Application for program year 2015 to the Lake County Community Development Commission in the amount of $100,000 for a public infrastructure improvement project on East Holly Street in the Village of Mundaline, Illinois.
Second.
Motion by Russell, second by Norton. Discussion?
Yeah, this is, you've indicated in some of our previous meetings, John, that the east side of Holly is scheduled for some work. Will this money be applied to that? Is that what we're reading here?
That's correct.
Anyone else? Okay. Clerk, please call the roll.
Russell?
Yes.
Norton?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Rikus?
Yes.
Motion carries.
The next group of motions has to do with vehicle purchases. First is a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing purchase and payment of two pickup trucks from Wright Automotive of Hillsboro, Illinois in the amount of $58,131.
Second.
Motion by Russell, second by Kim. Discussion?
Just wanted to comment real quick.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, to thank Director Beauchamp, who is not here, on saving $18,000 and coming in under budget. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Clerk, please call the roll.
Russell?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Rikus?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Norton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
The next motion is to adopt a resolution authorizing purchase and payment of two sport utility vehicles from Curry Motors in Frankford, Illinois through the Northwest Municipal Conference Joint Purchasing Program in the amount of $46,503.
Second.
Motion by Russell, second by Kim. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Russell?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Norton?
Yes.
Rikus?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And that's all we have, Mr. Mayor, for Public Works tonight.
Okay, thank you. Next up, Finance Committee, trustee Semple.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before we do the motion to approve the payment of bills, I was combing through the line items on the bill payment, and there is one particular line item that we do need to call out and vote on separately, I believe. There is a refund check in the amount of $43.64 to Dakota's Indoor Farmers Market. And I believe that that's for trustee Norton. And for trustee Norton's benefit, I believe we should pull this out and vote on this individually so trustee Norton can abstain. Is that correct, Charlie? So how do we do that? Can we vote on the, the big bill payment sands this first? Or how do you want to?
Well, I, I think I would vote to remove that item from the bill payment list, first of all. And then the second motion would be to approve it for payment. Mr. Norton would abstain from that. And then you would vote on all the remaining items on the bill.
Okay.
Three motion.
Terrific, Charlie. I'm going to go ahead and make the motion to remove the line item refund check amount in the, for $43.64 to Dakota's Indoor Farmers Market.
Second.
Motion by Semple, second by Kim. Discussion?
Should I abstain from this one as well? At the first two?
This is the one you abstain from.
Well, the first two. And then the third one I vote on. Right, okay.
Okay. Clerk, please call the roll.
Semple?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Rikus?
Yes.
Norton?
Abstain.
Motion carries.
And then, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to pay the bill in the amount of $43.64 to Dakota's Indoor Farmers Market, which we just removed from our governing body report of over $2 million, which we'll be paying in a moment.
Motion by Semple?
Second.
Second by Kim. Discussion?
I have to ask the question. What is it for? Sorry to go, but I have to ask the question.
It's for a refund on the water bill deposit for the indoor farmers market.
I see. Thank you.
Okay. Clerk, please call the roll.
Semple?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Rikus?
Yes.
Norton?
Abstain.
Now, that may seem as a trivial event, but we actually had a trustee a few years ago who was forced to resign for something somewhat similar. So just to keep us all out of trouble. And I told Dakota trustee Norton that we'll look out for him for a year, and then he's on his own, so. We've got over $2 million worth of bills to pay. And of that $2 million, we've got about $1.5 million, ranging from Delco Construction, which is the KSN build-out at the building formerly known as Anatol, now affectionately known as Archer Commons. We also have over $300,000 going to Campanella and Sons, which is construction work on Walnut Street. We've got a water bill payment to Central Lake County Water Agency. We're spending over $106,000 on replacement trees and parkway trees. Almost 50 grand for our contract paramedic services. We've got over $300,000 worth of interest payments on bonds outstanding. We're paying Harris Computer over $20,000 for our CityView subscription and Baxter and Woodman for our SCADA server replacements. We've also got Rossboro Partners, over $14,000 for landscaping throughout the village. So with all those in mind, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve the payment of bills as indicated in the governing body report for the period between May 12, 2015, ending June 8, 2015, for the amount of... Now, this amount's going to actually, we're going to deduct the $43.64 which Dakota just received. Amount of $2,138,880.54.
Seconded.
Motion by Semple, second by Norton. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Semple?
Yes.
Norton?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Rikus?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Doug, anything else for the, the exciting Finance Committee?
No, not this time.
That's all we have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Next up, Public Safety Committee, trustee Rikus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I would just like to echo your report at the beginning of this meeting, welcoming our new interim deputy chief, Ben Yoder. Deputy Chief Yoder and I had a nice meeting, and we discussed a number of different things. And some of the things we'd like to mention is that the fire, the fire department participated in a safety training for the staff at the village hall here on June the 2nd. And just a heads-up, on the 16th of June, the Citizens Fire Academy graduation will take place at the station. But I'd like to also, at this time, ask interim deputy chief Ben Yoder if he would like to tell us about some of the other things that have been going on with the fire department.
That one, there we go. Sorry, first one. Unfortunately, we did have the passing of our department photographer, Bill Romberger, on May 20th. He's also the father to one of our lieutenants, Lieutenant Romberger. And he has just recently completed his Enhanced Incident Command course at the Texas A&amp;M University down in Texas. It's a week-long class, getting everybody together on how to run big incidents. And speaking of incidents, my first day as interim deputy chief, we had two structure fires at 9/28 Concord Circle. About $50,000 damage to the building and about $10,000 to the contents. It's still kind of undetermined, but it looks like someone probably placed some charcoal in a plastic container next to the garage, and the colds worked out. So you probably shouldn't do that. And 2/24 Shady Dell, we had about $1,000 to the building and about $5,000 to the contents. And that looks like it was a failure in the electrical extension cords that were used throughout the house. Again, another learning thing, extension cords are for only temporary use, not to power your normal household items on a regular basis. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you very much, interim deputy chief. I also met with Chief Gunther the other day, and we had a very, very good meeting. Talked about some of the things that the fire, the police department have already been involved in, like cop on the roof, the Latino Academy graduation, and some of the upcoming things, like the bike rodeo and the golf outing. So, chief, if you'd like to tell us a little bit about those items and a little bit more of anything you have?
Sure, thank you. Our Special Olympics drive is coming to an end here. And we had another very successful year with just over $35,000 raised for Special Olympics through the various events that we do. We're very happy with the turnout there and the support of everybody from the city. That's, that was great. Our bike rodeo is this weekend, Sunday, at Ray's Bike Mower. It starts at 10:30, goes to about 1:30. We'll have a stunt show and some safety inspections and obstacle courses, et cetera, for the kids to do. So it's a wonderful thing. And as you said, we just graduated our fourth Latino Police Academy. Again, we had about 70, 75 people that showed up for the graduation and was very well-attended and received. And we'll be doing a few more there. It's very popular. They, they keep asking us to do it, and they keep bringing more people, so we're going to keep doing it, so. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, chief. That's my report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. All right, next up is the Community and Economic Development Committee. Trustee Abernathy is not present tonight. So the vice chair of that committee is trustee Russell. And you have a little bit in front of you there.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think she looked at the agenda and left town. It's always nice to start off being able to speak so much. First item is a new one for me. Meeting call. Northfield Block sign variance, June 22, 2015, at 6:45. I'm going to assume that that's where they're going to come in front of us and talk about their request for a sign variance?
Yes.
I got that one right. We don't need a vote or anything on that one.
No, no, you're just announcing the meeting call.
Good, everybody got that. Excellent. Next item has to do with metro self-storage. We have four motions. First, motion to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission meetings and findings of fact.
Motion by Russell?
Second.
Second by Kim. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Russell?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Norton?
Yes.
Rikus?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next motion, to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendations.
Motion by Russell?
Second.
Second by Norton. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Russell?
Yes.
Norton?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Rikus?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next motion is to authorize staff to draft an ordinance granting certain variations to metro storage at 1340 Butterfield Road.
Motion by Russell?
Second.
Second by Kim. Discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I had submitted a question, and it wasn't answered, but I was just wondering if there were... I know the variance they had asked for was fewer parking spaces. Is there enough space in the property for emergency vehicles? Should they need it, that they wouldn't be on Butterfield Road?
I can, I know you asked that question in email today, and I had a discussion with Mr. Schupke. I think the short answer is, first, I think the building is fully sprinkled building to begin with. Number two, and probably Mr. Yoder can respond to this more appropriately, but I don't, depending on the nature of the fire, we wouldn't commit our equipment onto the site because of the fire and progress. So it would most likely block Butterfield Road anyway. Maybe Ben can elaborate.
Excuse me, that'd be correct. We don't want everything in there, in essence, trapping ourselves. So to have things staged along Butterfield Road and then bring the personnel up necessary, that's, that's what we're more concerned with, especially in that, that type of building, because we don't know what's inside. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I just wanted...
Okay.
Wanted to make sure, since they were asking for the parking spaces cut in half and even fewer than that, that it was appropriate and still okay for, you know, in case emergency vehicles need to come. So if they're going to go on Butterfield, then that's fine with me. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, clerk, please call the roll.
Russell?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Norton?
Yes.
Rikus?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next motion is to authorize staff to draft a resolution approving a preliminary and final plat of subdivision. 1340 Butterfield resubdivision.
Motion by Russell?
Second.
Second by Kim. Discussion? Okay, clerk, please call the roll.
Russell?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Rikus?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Norton?
Yes.
Very good. Motion carries.
Next group of motions has to do with 410 Emerson Lane. First motion is to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission minutes and findings of fact.
Motion by Russell?
Second.
Second by Kim. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Russell?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Norton?
Yes.
Rikus?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next motion is to accept, accept the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendations.
Second.
Motion by Russell, second by Norton. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Russell?
Yes.
Norton?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Rikus?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next motion is to authorize staff to draft an ordinance granting certain zoning variations at 410 Emerson Lane.
Motion by Russell?
Second.
Second by Kim. Discussion? Yes.
Can you summarize real quickly or have staff what we're doing here for the public?
Okay. Yeah. Mr. Barrera, can you?
Sure, so the nature, the nature of this variation request is the property owner's looking to make an improvement to, to single-family residents. The improvement would be within the front yard. And certainly, that improvement encroaches, encroaches into the, our front yard setback requirements. And so that's, in essence, is a short and sweet of why they're here before, before you and seeking a variation.
Terrific, thank you. I regret not doing this for the previous one.
Okay, understood. Anyone else? Clerk, please call the roll.
Russell?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Rikus?
Yes.
Norton?[1536.41]
Yes.
Norton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion to authorize staff to draft an ordinance granting certain zoning vari, no, I think I already did that, right? I apologize. I'm losing track here. You threw me off a cadence.
We're on number four, Rolmatic.
Rol, Rolmatic, 1295 Armour Boulevard. Motion to accept the planning and zoning commission minutes and findings of fact.
Motion by Russell.
Second.
Second by Kim. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Russell.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Norton.
Yes.
Semple.
Yes.
Ricas.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion to accept the planning and zoning commission's recommendations.
Second.
Motion by Russell, second by Norton. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Russell.
Yes.
Norton.
Yes.
Ricas.
Yes.
Semple.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion to authorize staff to draft an ordinance granting a variation to Table 20.40-2 within a municipal code to reduce the required rear yard setback from 25 feet to 15 feet.
Motion by Russell.
Second.
Second by Kim. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Russell.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Ricas.
Yes.
Semple.
Yes.
Norton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Number five, Orchard Meadows subdivision recapture agreement and covenants. This first item will be about the acceptance of the declaration of covenants, conditions and restrictions for the Orchard Meadows subdivision. The motion is to accept the declaration of covenants, conditions and restrictions for the Orchard Meadows subdivision.
Motion by Russell.
Second.
Second by Kim. Discussion.
Yes.
Yes. Mr., maybe Mr. Barrera can give us a little bit of a, a little bit explanation on this one?
Sure, the, the short, the short story is that these are the declarations and covenants, conditions and restrictions for the Orchard Meadows subdivision. These are basically the documents that are given to, to the homeowners when they, when they purchase them, when they sign a contract. That spells out all the conditions to the homeowners association, what they can and can't do, the type of fences, et cetera. That's really the short version of, of it.
And what is the change in this one from the original one?
There is no change. This is, this is a document that's been created for this, this subdivision. It's not, every subdivision has them. In this case, we're, we're bringing this document before you, so you can accept them. This document will get recorded with the Lake County Recorder's Office, and then will be distributed to, to future residents of the subdivision.
So this is not a revision, then, to an original?
This is not, this is not a revision. This is a first-time document for the subdivision.
Thank you.
I have a question, Mr.
Yes, trustee Kim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director Barrera, I saw in the covenants that they cannot have a fence over five feet, and I'm not really a fence builder, but I saw, I think Lake Home Depot sells them in four and six-foot panels, so they just couldn't have six-foot fences at all. They would only be allowed to have four or five feet and
That is correct. That's what's proposed in this covenant.
Okay, and no chain link fences. So if people came in the future to us and asked for a six-foot privacy fence, because that's how it's sold, they would just have to go through the variance process, or is it just not allowed?
It's not allowed. It's not, it wouldn't be allowed by the homeowners association, so in this instance, the more restrictive would prevail, and so this document would be the one that would prevail, even if our ordinance, our zoning ordinance allows for it.
Okay, all right. Thank you for clarifying.
Anyone else? Okay, clerk, please call the roll.
Russell.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Norton.
Yes.
Ricas.
Yes.
Semple.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item is about the First Amendment to the Orchard Meadows Development Agreement and Roadway Improvements Recapture Agreement. Motion is to authorize staff to draft a resolution executing the First Amendment to the development agreement between K, oh, man, I'm going to butcher this. Hovnanian? Nenian? Hovnan?
Hovnanian.
Okay.
K. Hovnanian.
K. Hovnanian. At Orchard Meadows LLC in the Village of Mundaline.
Motion by Russell.
Second.
Second by Kim. Discussion. Yes, please. Victor, maybe, maybe Director Barrera should say, can you give us an overview of this one now?
Sure, I apologize. I was taking some notes down. The essence of this recapture is basically gives the developer the opportunity to just that, recapture some of the costs of the proposed improvements. In this instance, they're looking to recapture 50% of the costs associated with the extension of Cortland, and looking to recapture 25% of the costs associated with improvements to Midlothian Road. Both of those costs are equaling approximately $152,000, that those are to be repaid by the benefiting property. In this instance, the benefiting property is the property immediately to the south of the Cortland Extension, known by some as the Sunrise Senior, Sunrise Senior Living Developments or Parcel.
So they're going to have to pay this, this amount?
Yes, they would have to pay this amount.
But they're not part of the development, are they?
No, they are not a part of the development.
How do you get them to pay it?
Because they, they stand to benefit from these improvements.
Well, I understand that, but how do you, can you force them by law to pay that amount?
We, it goes against their title on the property.
Okay. I see. All right, thank you. Okay, I want to just to introduce, we have the folks from K. Hovnanian here. There we go. Just, do you want to address the board at all? I mean, if you could come on up, give us your name, and, because this is quite a development down there, and this is quite an evening after a lot of work, so.
My name is Brian Murphy with K. Hovnanian Homes.
Okay.
I'm the area vice president for the north, so we're very excited to get started on Orchard Meadows.
Yep.
As Victor had indicated on the recapture agreement, we're doing a full improvement on Midlothian Road, installing two left-hand turning lanes, both into the community and into the communities in the east, along with the Cortland Road Extension, and are requesting that the benefiting property, Sunrise, helps with some of the costs that are associated with this, with this improvement. So I think this improvement is going to help the development, help Sunrise, help the entire community, and we're, we're looking forward to getting it started.
Okay. I, I do have a question, and I'm not sure who to address it to, but is Sunrise still considering building on that property?
Sunrise has their property currently on the market, and is looking to
So then the question is, did you contact Sunrise to see if you could purchase that and make it part of your development?
We have, I have, we have not reached out to Sunrise at this point, no.
Does that not make sense to do that, or?
That would be something that we would pursue, you know, at this point, I didn't, you know, know that they were interested in selling our property, but that's something that we can look into.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. I've got a couple of questions for you. Can you summarize the subdivision you're looking to build? How many homes? What kind of sales price? When are you looking to break ground? You know, we've, we've got another meeting we've got to get into pretty quickly, so just, just real brief for everybody.
Yeah, Orchard Meadows consists of 69 home sites. We're going to have homes. We have a ranch home there that's going to be about 1,800 square feet, and then our two-story homes are about 2,200 square feet that go up to 3,400 square feet. We are breaking ground, actually, as we speak. We've been doing some preliminary work there and starting to work on the Cortland Road Extension. We plan to do that land development to put the infrastructure and the roads in this summer. We also, once the building department gets, gets to finalize the plans, we're going to start a model there as well, and we hope to open up model sales probably in about September. Pricing is still yet to be determined as we're finalizing the costs with some of our trades, but we anticipate that pricing all-in being from the low to high 300s, depending on what customer spends on options and additions and things of that nature.
Okay. All right. We'll progress here. Go ahead. Clerk, please take the roll.
Russell.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Semple.
Yes.
Norton.
Yes.
Ricas.
Yes.
Motion carries.
The next motion is to authorize staff to draft a resolution executing the roadway improvements recapture agreement between K.
Hovnanian.
Hovnanian? I really apologize to you for that. You might want to consider changing that. Just really sorry. At Orchard Meadows LLC in the Village of Mundaline.
Motion by Russell.
Second.
Second by Kim. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Russell.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Norton.
Yes.
Ricas.
Yes.
Semple.
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Sir, thank you so much for coming to Mundaline, developing there with us. It's, we're glad to partner with you and creating a new neighborhood there, actually, so. Thank you very much.
I'll be by later in the week to get my training on the name pronunciation.
All right.
Number six, grant application for property owned by Glenn and Gloria Garamani at 131 West Maple Avenue, Mundaline. What's that?
It says west on this.
I'm sorry? Do we need to change that in the motion, then?
Yes. Go ahead and read the motion and put in east.
Okay. Motion to adopt a resolution approving the grant application for property owned by Glenn and Gloria Garamani at 131 East Maple Avenue, Mundaline, Illinois, under the Mundaline Economic Incentive Program.
Second.
Motion by Russell, second by Kim. Discussion. I just have a question. On one of the forms that you filled out, there was an indication that the step may be replaced, but it appeared that in the other documents it said it will. Will it, or will it not? This is just for the landscaping. Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, clerk, please call the roll.
Russell.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Norton.
Yes.
Ricas.
Yes.
Semple.
Yes.
Motion carries. I'd say too, you know, thank you for being the second applicant for our incentive program. It's great. And, yeah, no, congratulations, and thank you for doing that.
Next item, number seven. You know, I am going to get even with trustee Abernathy. Request for Fifth Amendment to the Mundaline Crossings Revised Annexation Agreement. Motion to accept the planning and zoning commission minutes and findings of fact.
Motion by Russell.
Second.
Second by Kim. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Russell.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Semple.
Yes.
Norton.
Yes.
Ricas.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion to accept the planning and zoning commission's recommendations.
Second.
Motion by Russell, second by Norton. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Russell.
Yes.
Norton.
Yes.
Ricas.
Yes.
Semple.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion to pass an ordinance amending the 2011 Comprehensive Plan to Change the Recommended Land Use of the Property Located at 2,000, well, let's see, 2,972 North Illinois Route 83, 29080 North Illinois Route 83, and 0 Illinois Route 60, Mundaline Crossings Unit 2, Mundaline, Illinois, known as Mundaline Crossings Unit 2, from general commercial to multifamily land use.
Motion by Russell.
Second.
Second by Kim. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Russell.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Ricas.
Yes.
Norton.
Yes.
Semple.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion to pass an ordinance granting a rezoning of the property located at 29172 North Illinois Route 83, 29080 North Illinois Route 83, and 0 Illinois Route 60, Mundaline, Illinois, known as Mundaline Crossings Unit 2, from OR, Office Research Zoning District, to R5, Multifamily Residential Zoning District.
Motion by Russell.
Second.
Second by Ricas. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Russell.
Yes.
Ricas.
Yes.
Semple.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Norton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion to adopt a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of the Mundaline Crossings Fifth Amendment to Revised Annexation Agreement.
Motion by Russell.
Second.
Second by Kim. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Russell.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Norton.
Yes.
Ricas.
Yes.
Semple.
Motion carries.
Okay, it wasn't enough that
Thank you for your vote. My name is Tom Small, and I represent the venture. I know that I want to say it's, these are great times. We kind of knew today where our needs we had slammed up, so thank you very much.
Thank you. It's been a lot of work, and I think it's a wise thing that we did there.
I think, I think you'll see something happen very quickly.
Yep.
Thank you.
Agreed. Thank you. Okay.
Besides all of the motions that trustee Abernathy left me, she also asked me to give some more information here. So, like you haven't heard enough of me for one evening. And of course, she left me with the new business list, which includes Spanish-speaking businesses. So to my Spanish-speaking friends, I apologize in advance. First business that is new to town is Centro de Bienestar, DBA Herbalife Club, at 330 North Seymour Avenue. They're training and recruiting and sampling the products from Herbalife Club. Competition Tattoo and Custom Cycles, 321 Townline Road. I think their name pretty much says everything. They've been in here before. Nice people. Doggone Dirty. Love the marketing. 1428 South Butterfield Road. A full-service groomer, as well as doggy daycare. We got a lot of dogs in this town, I got to tell you. International Equipment and Trading Limited, 955 Campus Drive. They sell refurbished analytical laboratory equipment. That's a new one for the village. Kind of exciting about that. So, Don told me to talk about the bike rodeo. I think you've already covered that. So I got that one covered. For those of you who are interested, Park on Park is again on Wednesday night of this week, one of the largest car shows in northern Illinois. It's a great, great event. And last but not least, we have a new networking group meeting here in town at the Doubletree Hotel by Hilton. Kip, the manager down there, is bringing a group called Freedom One Networking. It's for business owners to come on Wednesday mornings from 7:15 until 8:30 to network their businesses. It's, was established by the Trinell Group in Libertyville originally, and now they're putting a group over here in Mundaline. And to the best of my knowledge, Mr. Mayor, that is it.
Okay. Thank you. You did a great job. Made it. Nice. All right. At this point, we are going to recess into a Liquor Control Commission meeting before we continue with our agenda. So I need a motion for us to recess into the Liquor Control Commission meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Norton, second by Kim. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Norton.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Rikus?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Okay. Now, we need a motion to... Okay, okay. Discussion, all right. Clerk, please call the roll.
Kim?
Yes.
Rikus?
Yes.
Norton?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next is attendance. Okay. Clerk, please take attendance.
Abernathy? Kim?
Here.
Norton?
Here.
Rikus?
Here.
Russell?
Here.
Semple?
Here.
Okay. First up on the agenda for tonight would be public commentary. Does any member of the audience wish to address the Liquor Control Commission at this time? Okay. Then we'll close the floor and now go to the approval of minutes. There are two motions. First, I need a motion to approve the Board of Trustees Liquor Control Commission minutes from April 13th, 2015, 8:30 PM.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Kim, second by Norton. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Kim?
Yes.
Norton?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Rikus?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, I need a motion to approve the Board of Trustees Liquor Control Commission from April 27th, 2015. That was at 7:30 PM.
So moved.
Motion by Kim?
Second.
Second by Semple. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Kim?
Yes, actually, I do have a question. I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
Is it okay for trustee Norton to vote on these if he wasn't here?
It's okay if he's running minutes.
Okay, all right, thank you. Yes.
Okay. Anyone else? Clerk, please call the roll.
Kim?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Rikus?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Norton?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, we have three liquor violations we need to address. Wingstop first, then Pine Meadow, then Aldi. I'll turn this now over to our attorney, Mr. Larry Lalazare.
Good evening, Mayor. This is the matter involving PZRC Inc. doing business as Wingstop, 720 South Route 83 in Mundaline, regarding liquor license LL14-04003. If you review the citation that was prepared in this matter, there was numerous allegations. The primary one being the sale of alcohol to minor, which occurred back on April 20th of this year. During the course of that investigation, they found, of course, with the compliance checks, that there was a lack of BACIT certification among many of the employees of the business. And there was other individuals that were not even authorized to be licensed and certified as BACIT-trained employees that were handling liquor there. Mr. Prilano, the president of PZRC Inc. is here. We entered into a proposed settlement agreement to address all of the allegations, but the primary one that they'd be admitting to is the sale of the alcohol to the minor on April 20th, 2015. They have a prior violation in 2008. In keeping with the commission's previous practice, if it's been more than three years, we kind of consider them a first offender. And based on numerous violations, as well as their past history, we've agreed, myself and Mr. Prilano, others present, certainly step forward, for a fine of $750, which is a little higher than our normal fine, usually a $500 fine for a first offender because of the other offenses. They currently do not have a liquor license because they were in the renewal process right before this violation took place at the end of April. And there were some stipulations and conditions that the police department and the village was taking as far as their renewal of their license. They've taken those steps to hire a new manager. They provided new certifications for their BACIT-eligible employees. And we think, based on their efforts to correct those violations and come before you this evening, we recommend that you approve this with a $750 fine. No suspension otherwise if the fine will be paid within 24 hours.
Okay. I... $750 is fine with me, but you and I have had a... We had a conversation a few years back, along with Chief. Can you just tell us a little bit about the circumstances with the manager and what happened there?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
We hired a manager who had prior restaurant experience with a liquor license. BACIT-certified. It was certified. And we took the proper steps to dismiss him and hired a new manager who had worked with us. And she's certified. And we have all this, you know, the staff trained. We've worked with them at numerous meetings to ensure that it doesn't happen again. And for the record, in 2008, that wasn't our corporation. We actually purchased this business in 2012. That was a prior owner, so I just want to clarify that. But like I said, we have new management, new staff. And I am sure everybody that this won't happen again.
Okay. You know, because... Now, you... How often are you or your partner at the store? Are you there? Yeah?
I have numerous Wingstops.
Yes.
But I do live in Lake County. I live in, actually, Port Barrington. So, this store is my first store that I visit in the morning and my last store I visit when I come home. So, I'm more active at the store. I would say every given week, I'm about... I'm there about 30 hours a week.
Okay. Well, because I remember from our meeting, you're very ambitious.
Thank you.
And you were expanding at that time, and it's good that you're stopping in every day. And twice a day, I think that makes me feel better that you're swinging by there, especially after what happened here.
Definitely.
So... Anyone else want to... Trustee Semple?
Yeah, I hope you'll take this as a reminder that we do take these rules very seriously and hope that you do as well. And hopefully, this demonstrates how serious we do take it. And, you know, we don't want to see you back again, bottom line. And we're going to tell us next... The next couple of businesses, the same thing, too.
Understood.
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay. Are we good with the penalty, the $750? You good with that? Trustee Semple?
Yes.
Okay with that? You guys?
Yes.
Yes, okay. All right. Very good.
I have a proposed order.
Okay. Yep. Do we have... Do we have information on this? I don't see it on here.
Is there more?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, thank you. Yeah, we'll just go at your pace there, because... Yep, that's fine.
This next one involves Pine Meadow Golf Club Inc. at 1 Pine Meadow Lane, Mundaline, Illinois. Dennis Johnson, the manager, is present. If you'd step forward, sir. This was also involving the same compliance check by the police department on April 20th of 2015, in which a sale of alcohol to minor took place at the clubhouse at the Pine Meadows Golf Course. The history for Pine Meadows is that they had one about 10 years ago in August of 2006 and one over five years ago in 2010. And again, keeping in consistent with our previous history of considering more than three years of first offense, we have proposed a fine of $500 for their license. Now, at the time, that was under their old license, I understand. It has been renewed for 2015 going forward until next year. We are not recommending any suspension of their current license. They'll pay the fine within 24 hours. I did want to also indicate that both the employee here has appeared before the hearing officer who sold the alcohol and has pled guilty, was found guilty by our hearing officer. So, they've admitted and acknowledged their mistake in that.
Okay. Sir, you want to just tell us what happened?
The employee made a mistake. We do take this very serious, that any employee that involves an alcohol signs a statement that it's automatic dismissal for breaking the law. In this case, it was very, very difficult because he was really a wonderful individual. But it's hard and fast. The people I work for jumps at golf and take it extremely serious. And there's no waiver. So, unless the next morning, I had to call... I wasn't present the next morning. We had to call him and say, "I'm sorry, but you remember the document you signed?" And he said, "Yes, he did. It was totally his fault." And he apologized. And that's it. We did make... We did get the person for tobacco, though, that came in. And I would also like to say, we do loan you two golf carts for your Fourth of July parade every year.
Okay. Anyone want to ask questions?
Just to reiterate the same thing, that, you know, it is... You know, I understand you've got a lot of customers coming through there. Probably not a lot of businesses like yours in Mundaline. And we fail to remember that you are actually in Mundaline. But just take it seriously, like you said you do, because we have to. So, appreciate that.
Anyone else? Everyone good with the $500? You good with that? You guys good? Okay. Thank you. All right.
The last hearing tonight is for Aldi Foods at 7:30 South Route 83 in Mundaline. This was also pursuant to the police department's compliance check on April 20th, 2015, in which the store employee sold alcohol to a minor. Jeff Drummond, the manager, is present this evening. Sir, if you'd step forward. This situation, if you look at your citation, they actually had two violations that they were originally cited for. One was the sale of alcohol to the minor, and the other was for not having BACIT certification. The employee of Aldi did appear before the hearing officer last month. She did have her BACIT certification. She apparently didn't have her current one on the premises on the night when the police did their compliance check. So, that case was dismissed by the hearing officer, and she pled guilty and paid her fine for the sale of alcohol to the minor. Aldi has no prior violations. This would be their first offense, and we are recommending, pursuant to an agreement between Mr. Drummond and myself, a $500 fine and no suspension of their current liquor license.
Okay. Want to just tell us what happened?
According to her, she actually checked the ID, just punched the wrong date in. Usually, we terminate someone right after the first offense, but circumstances, she has family just got diagnosed with cancer, so we're kind of more leaning with her. She's been with me probably 12 years. Never had issues with her. So, I knew it was kind of hopefully just a one-time thing. She was forewarned that this is only a one-time thing. We let you slide usually. We don't even give you a warning, you know? If you do it, you're gone. They... The BACIT thing, I think, she actually... We actually had it on file. The manager, that was on duty, didn't see it, apparently. But we have them all on file. Probably have too many on file. Like I have to say, to keep everything, so... As far as, like I said, we give them sign-off sheets three or four times a year, because we understand the seriousness of it. Where we iterate the policies, pretty much tell them that, you know, not only as a business will we get, you know, disciplined, but you individually will as well. Like I said, normally, we will terminate them after the first time, but because of circumstances, we... Because she's been with us for probably 18 years. We've been selling alcohol for, you know, we opened about 10 years ago. She's never had an issue before. That, you know, we gave her the one warning this time. When I said, "She..." I think she actually just told me she did ID him, just hit 85 rather than 95. I kind of explained to her, "Well, you still should have noticed the vertical." But I think she was having a really rough night, as it was. So, I told her, you know, I say, "Let us know. We won't leave you on a register for a lot of reasons." This being one of them.
Hmm. Okay.
I'll do it again, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Just a reminder how serious we take this, and, you know, it sounds like you do as well, especially with the number of customers you've had. And I think attorney Lalazare said this is your first violation. That unto itself is pretty impressive. But, you know, we still have to do what we have to do here. And just a reminder for everybody, the police department held a meeting for all the liquor license holders in February, I believe, right, Chief?
Yeah, if I can just take a minute, since we have a new board, and kind of explain to them how these checks are done.
Sure.
We do... We hold annual license meetings. All the license holders are required to come to the meeting and/or pick up their packet, where we explain this, among other procedures. But we explain to the owners or their representatives at that annual meeting before they get their licenses, how we do these. We receive funding through the state as part of a grant. We do... We have just over 40 liquor licenses that we check annually. We check them. We break them into thirds, so we check between 13 and 15 liquor licenses each check. So, we do three checks per year. And a fourth one, we do on anybody that's violated in the previous year. So, the people that violate get a secondary check. They're told that ahead of time. Now, here's the part of the checks. We use an individual between the ages of 18 and 20 years old. They are given specific instructions. They may not lie. They must tell the truth. If asked for their driver's license, they must actually produce their actual driver's license. They're not allowed to dress in a manner that would disguise their identity or make them look older. So, essentially, we make it very difficult for someone not to actually check the ID. And if they do check the ID, they get the underage ID, and they look at the ID. There should be no reason for that. But we do it in that sense, because this isn't a means to try to trip anybody up. It's actually just a compliance check to make sure people are doing those checks and doing it the right way. But with 45 liquor licenses in town, we're always going to have a few people that miss that. I just want you to know that how the process kind of works. So, when you see these come for you, each time, you understand. We go through that each and every time. Okay?
Thank you.
If I could just follow up with the chief said, too, as well, because I review all these reports that come in. There's usually two officers in plainclothes or with the eyesight and earshot of the transaction. So, they personally witness, and in many cases, actually overhear the transaction as well. So, it's not like the miners going into the establishment and coming out and reporting what's happened. So, there is a lot of verification on that. And as the chief said, they're given every opportunity to ask for the ID, present the ID. The officers make sure that they actually have their actual driver's license on their person and make sure they don't have any other licenses or identification with them there. So, it's a very thorough process.
Yep. Okay. Everyone good with the $500? Yes? Yes, okay. Very good. Okay. And with that, we need a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Rikus, second by Semple. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Rikus?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Norton?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Motion carries. Now, we need a motion... I'll take it.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Need a motion to reconvene the village board meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Kim?
Second.
Second by Rikus. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Kim?
Yes.
Rikus?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Norton?
Yes.
Okay. And then, attendance.
Abernathy? Kim?
Here.
Norton?
Here.
Rikus?
Here.
Russell?
Here.
Semple?
Here.
Okay. Let's see. Where were we? Trustee Russell? I'm just joking. I'm just joking. Really? More? All right. We are at Communication and Marketing Committee report. Trustee Kim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no motions tonight, but a couple of things I wanted to touch on. One was, I believe at the last meeting, I mentioned that we were one of the top 10 suburbs for young couples around Chicago. But we more recently won top 10 Chicago suburbs for families as well. So, not only young couples, but families can also enjoy being here. The Beer Festival that just happened, there were quite a few tweets about it. So, if you look it up and go to Twitter and search for the Mundaline Beer Festival, there's quite a few awesome tweets and photos, especially with the long line going through the metro lot. That was pretty neat. It was actually going through the lot and kind of like around the block as well, because it was so, so well attended. I also wanted to say how quickly we got the word out when Grayslake changed their zoning hearing. Not only did the staff respond very quickly and, you know, on a Saturday, pump that out, but also people... We put it on Facebook. It also went on Twitter. And people were sharing it left and right. So, I'm hoping nobody showed up at that meeting tonight. But we did... We did very well putting that out there. I also wanted to express my appreciation for Dawn Genich, who was here earlier, and she's the manager of marketing and communications for the village of Mundaline. And she gave kind of a breakdown on where we are with the branding campaign, how far we've come and what we've yet to do. And hopefully, so when people ask us, you know, questions about it or what has been done, that we all have the same information and we can disseminate that. So, that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Good, thank you. Next up, Transportation and Infrastructure Committee report. Trustee Norton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have three motions to make tonight. The first one, I'd like to make a motion to award a contract to Black Engineering Company Incorporated for the permit year 13 NPDES MS4 Permit Compliance Activities in the not-to-exceed amount of $20,000, and authorize the village engineer to sign the contract.
We have a motion by Norton.
Second.
Second by Semple. Any discussion on this? Well, something has to be said, right? I mean, this is what we call an unfunded mandate put on us by the state of Illinois. And this is a $20,000 item we pay out every year. And for many, many years, trustee Sullivan, Ed Sullivan, when he was with us, would sound off about the unfunded mandates coming from Springfield at us. And so, this is one of those. We have to do it. It's unfortunate, but there you go. Anyone else? Yes?
Yes, if I may add, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You had mentioned that in the next meeting, we're going to talk about the possibility of a phosphorus ban. And this IEP A unfunded mandate addresses removing phosphorus from the water before putting it in the stream. So, I just thought it was very apt. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Clerk, please take the roll.
Norton?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Rikus?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, I would like to make a motion to authorize the mayor and village clerk to sign the addendum agreement for the village of Mundaline State of Illinois Route 6083 improvement.
Motion by Norton?
Second.
Second by Kim. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Norton?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Rikus?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, and last on my list tonight, I would like to make a motion to approve an agreement for professional services with Goalt Hamilton Associates Incorporated for the inspection of public subdivision improvements within the Orchard Meadows subdivision in the not-to-exceed amount of $74,000, and authorize the village engineer's signature on the agreement.
Motion by Norton?
Second.
Second by Kim. Discussion.
Yeah, can I just ask a question? Why are we paying for that?
We're not. That's being paid by the developer. There's a percentage that they pay based on the public improvement cost. So, it's... They pay us, and then we hire the engineer to oversee the construction of those public improvements.
Thank you.
That ultimately, we will accept as ours.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else? All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Norton?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Rikus?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Motion carries.
That concludes my report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Other reports, item G. Does any trustee have any other report to file at this time with the board? No? Okay. That moves us on to scheduled business omnibus vote items. We have items 1 through 13. Does any trustee wish to pull any of the items off the omnibus vote list?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Kim?
Item number four.
Item number four. Okay, anyone else?
Thank you.
I want to ask a question about item number one. Do I need to pull that off?
Yes.
And I want to pull off number one.
All right. Trustee Rikus pulling off number one. Anyone else? Okay. Then we need a motion to pass items 2, 3, and then 5 through 13.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Kim, second by Norton. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Kim?
Yes.
Norton?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Ricas?
Yes.
Motion carries. Trustee Ricas, item number one, please.
And I'm reading the motion to approve a purchase order to BMW Control Systems integration in the amount of $33,250 to replace and repair aeration instrumentation damage due to lightning strike. Is there any insurance that covered a portion of this?
We have insurance, but it didn't cover any portion. I think our deductible is 30?
No, John, it didn't cover. It covered, the whole damage to the lightning was 40.
Oh.
And our insurance deductible is 25.
Okay. So a portion.
So it did cover a portion.
Right.
That was the only question I had, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. So do you want to make a motion to pass number one there?
I'll make a motion to pass number one of the...
Very good. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Kim. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Ricas?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Norton?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number four, trustee Kim.
I wanted to vote in the negative, and I didn't want to hold up the rest of the omnibus.
Okay.
Would you like me to make the motion, or?
You can make the motion if you want.
Okay.
So you'll make the motion to pass number four? Okay.
Yes. I make the motion to pass number four.
Number, or do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Second by Ricas. Discussion.
I could probably just throw in the line that I believe we should be able to have competitive bids, so I disagree with having the prevailing wage. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'm curious. I've been involved in the prevailing wage most of my career, as both a contractor and on the receiving end of it. By not voting for this, if the village were to take a position of saying, "No, we disagree with it," it means what?
We all go to jail. No, no. We violate state law technically by doing that, right?
Yeah, I think it's been, this question's come up almost every year, and I think it's really, quite frankly, unknown what the consequences would be. But we do receive grant funding from the state, and so when you start thinking about things that could be held up, we've always elected to at least have a simple majority that would approve the prevailing wage ordinance.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but also the feds have the same standard. If we take any federal funding, we also have the same issue.
Yeah.
Just for the record, I don't want to test it.
Wise choice.
Anyone else? Okay. Clerk, please call the roll.
Kim?
No.
Ricas?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Norton?
No.
It's three to two? That's right. I vote yes. Motion carries. That takes us to village staff reports. Village administrator, Mr. Libado.
I just have a couple of items that are on the agenda. The first one is the termination of the lease with Cricket. And so there are three motions that I'm looking for, and the first one is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the termination notice from Cricket dated May 27, 2015.
Okay. Can I have that motion, please?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Semple.
Second.
Second by trustee Kim. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Semple?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Norton?
Yes.
Ricas?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And the second one is a motion to determining that the termination is in accordance with section 16.1D of the lease agreement between the Village of Mundaline and Denali Spectrum Operations dated January 27, 2009.
Do we have that motion?
So moved.
Motion by Norton?
Second.
Second by Kim. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Norton?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Ricas?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And the last motion is to accept the termination notice submitted by Cricket with the effective date of October 31, 2015.
Can I get that motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Kim?
Second.
Second by Norton. Now, before we take that, I was contacted by the press about this before the meeting here. Can you just summarize what's going on? Because those, AT&amp;T bought Cricket or something like that?
Yeah, that's true, and Mr. Flynn certainly knows more than I, but they are a tenant, for lack of a better word, on our tower on division, and they've been there for, gosh, eight years.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they've just decided they have no use for it, I think.
Okay.
Is the long and short of it. And so they're going to, they have certain obligations to remove the equipment, so we wanted to make sure that everything was done properly, that they accepted their termination notice, and that they followed the obligations in the contract.
Okay. Very good. Anyone else? Discussion? All right. Clerk, please call the roll.
Kim?
Yes.
Norton?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Ricas?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And the last item I have on the agenda is CityView contract termination. Earlier in the meeting, there was a motion to approve a contract with CityView, but that was for the ongoing maintenance. CityView is the software program that we use for the building department, and that will continue. The motion that we're asking for here is as a result of, we were going to upgrade our CityView, and that project didn't go so well. So I'll maybe make the motion, and then I can answer questions and explain that a little bit more. But the motion we're looking for is to adopt a resolution authorizing the village administrator to serve a written notice upon CityView of the village's termination for cause of the contract dated June 25, 2013, for a software update from CityView version 8.3 to CityView pre-builts.
Do I have that motion, please?
So moved.
Motion by Kim?
Second.
Second by Norton. All right. Discussion. Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. If I remember correctly, the program, when we went to upgrade it, basically crashed and blew up in our faces, more or less speaking, you know, in general terms. It didn't go very well.
No.
Did CityView come to us and say, "Okay, we understand," or are we having to force this issue?
We've been having to force this. This has been, we've had written complaints to them, and verbal complaints over the course of the contract. Even though it was initiated in 2013, because of the workload, we probably didn't get started on it until 2014 at some point. And so we've been working on it in earnest for at least the last nine to 12 months. And they continually under-deliver on what our expectations were in terms of what we expected this software to do. The training has been lacking. When they've gotten into training, these are basically webinars, conference calls. The program wasn't working, so they couldn't do the training. And so it was one delay after another, and it's just been a constant frustration, and it isn't doing what it's supposed to do. And so we've tried numerous times to correct the problems with them, and brought it to their attention a number of times, not only verbally, but in writing. And we've just gotten to the point where it's just a big waste of our time, and we're asking to terminate that contract, and we're asking for a certain monies to be returned